Trusty Trombley. Trusty Trombley.
Here.
Trusty Garrett.
Here.
Mayor Martin.
Here. A motion to approve the minutes of the previous meeting, November 5th, 2012.
So moved.
Have a second?
Second.
Any discussion on the minutes? All those approving the minutes, if I have a second, I...
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Presentation of petitions, communications, notices, general question period for members of the community. If I may, just to quickly go over the guidelines. The public shall be allowed to speak only during the public comment period of the meeting or at such other time as the majority of the board shall allow. Speakers must be recognized by the presiding officer. Speakers must give their name, address, and organization, if any. Board members may, with the permission of the mayor, interrupt the speaker during their remarks, but only for the purpose of clarification of information. All remarks shall be addressed to the board as a body and not to any member thereof. Speakers shall observe the commonly accepted rules of courtesy, decorum, dignity, and good taste. Interested parties or their representatives may address the board by written communications. Written communications shall be delivered to the clerk treasurer for their designee. I'm glad to see you all here. If you would please, four to five minutes on your comments. You feel that it's necessary, call me. We'll be more than welcome to sit down with you at another time. And that's... We'll begin. Would anybody like to address the board?
Hi, Wood. My name is Kevin Truller. I have a petition for the board. In particular, it must be addressed to the village clerk. The village... The petition is for the dissolution of the village of Champlain, signed by the required amount of electors from the village. I'd like to get this time and date stamped and a copy returned showing it has been provided to the board as copy because this is the original and is required by law to be submitted to the board.
Okay. The timeframe is ten days. Am I right? Ten days?
Further review for the town clerk.
Yes, for the review.
Correct.
Anything else? Sure. Go ahead.
My name is Louis Alena, and I have a request for the village on Prospect Street. It's kind of... Everybody in town says it's a forgotten street. I don't want to leave that. But we need sidewalks, at least up to the cemetery. There's people, older people like myself, that are walking in the road, especially in May. And as you know, the cars pop that hill fast, and cars are actually going around. Somebody could get hurt or worse. And then the village could be held. You know what I'm saying?
Yep.
So I bring it up now so you guys at the board can discuss it through the winter and possibly get something done in the spring, at least up to the cemetery.
Yep.
And the sidewalk from the bottom, I don't know if you ever walk them, but there's seeders growing through them that are all broken. Somebody gonna break their leg during the walk.
We have to renew our attention on the sidewalk issue.
Okay. I was wanting to just put them in this past summer, and they hear most of work themselves. If you give them a call or something, they might help you out there.
Yeah, I know Mr. Ross. Well, give them a call.
Good.
I think most of that was done by grants outside work. That's a good idea. Thank you. In line, code enforcement officer is excused tonight. We've all been copied with his report. Do you have any questions on this that I can bring to Mike in the morning? Can notice me, he typed it for you.
And he did. It was very nice. I can read it much better this one.
Okay, there's a couple things that we will address tonight on his report. We'll bring it up under new business, I guess.
I heard you talking to him tomorrow.
Yes.
I'd like to know what he's doing regarding what's going on with the village.
Is it on his report or should I?
I don't see it.
Just a reminder that we are still using the old recording, and they've asked us to speak louder tonight. Sorry. Tell me the name.
Thank you.
It is... There are portions of the wall that have fallen down and are on the sidewalk, and you can now see through to the wall. So it... Something needs to be done with this.
They were working on parts of it, but not all of it.
Whatever part they were working on, this is not the end they were working on. Because now it is down, and you can see through to the grass. So Mike does need to address that again.
Okay. I'll get you on that. My report. A reminder, we are now in the plowing and sanding season. There is no parking on village streets between 2:00 a.m. and 6:00 a.m. from November 1st through April 1st, 2013. Our annual Christmas tree lighting will be held Saturday in the village park, December 15th, from 6:30 to 8:00. There will be caroling, warm beverages, and maybe a visit from Sandy himself for the children. Everyone is welcome to attend, dress warmly, and enjoy the evening. I would again like to thank Bill Hoogel and Karen Gresinda for co-chairing the playground committee. The new playground will be an exciting place for our children to enjoy, for adults to get some exercise, and it will be very close to the community garden. So while the children play, the adults can tend to their garden plots. We hope this community... We hope this community will help to make this playground a reality. Karen and Bill can be reached, or Karen can be reached, at (298) 3732 for information on how to make a donation for the playground. Local businesses are encouraged to participate in this worthwhile endeavor. Thanks in advance for your help. I'd like to congratulate the DPW crew, Woody Kissel, James Andres, Terry Lindcourt, on their completion of the basics laboratory skills class given to them in Peru. Altogether, the two days, thirteen and a half contact hours for water testing, very important in their certification level. We will have a presentation from a representative of Ambit Energy explaining available programs to help save on our energy costs. This will be at 7:00 p.m. Another firm did not respond to our request for information. I was asked to gather information about installing solar panels at last month's meeting. I had the opportunity to speak with representatives in Chez-Zee about the presentation given to that board and their decision not to participate. I was told there was not enough adequate town-owned land available for the solar panels. Question was who would be responsible for maintaining the panels. It was not clearly explained as I watched the videotape. No real guarantees about the dollar return to the town. The representative during the presentation wanted a commitment decision that evening for as soon as possible before he would even think about beginning. And finally, the board felt the savings were much less than they expected or anticipated. So they chose not to participate with the solar panel venture. Had the opportunity to talk to a couple engineering firms. They have visited the wastewater plant with the intention of developing new specifications for turbine blowers to increase efficiency and save on power usage. I asked each firm to focus on the payback period of time for potential investment. One firm responded that we should also look at making improvements in our existing infrastructure with the potential of increasing plant efficiency to lower power usage. We have plans in conjunction with the wastewater operator to look at the cost that these improvements would make in our wastewater plant. And I think that's all. Any discussion? Questions?
Can you speak with our CD?
Sure. Trusty Trombley.
Just that there is a zoning board of appeals meeting on Wednesday, the 12th, at 5:00 p.m., and it is a public hearing. There's two items on the agenda for that. And other than that, I heard the plow's out this morning about 6:15. They were right on top of it. Kudos to the guys there. They're starting the season off well.
I think that's the second time, and I felt it was important to figure out this morning with the forecast of freezing rain, snow. Called them yesterday afternoon, and they weren't real excited about coming out, but they agreed. Did it?
Yep.
Thank you. Trusty Trombley.
Hi. I've just got a couple public announcements. This is open to the public, Knights of Columbus Annual Hay Ride and Christmas Caroling will be December 23rd at 6:00 p.m. So please come join us. There's free refreshments, and again, Sandy may visit there as well. And on January 7th, CBPH will be holding a blood drive at the Knights of Columbus from 3:00 to 6:00 p.m. So it's January 7th, Street 6, for the blood drive. I'll be getting posters out in a minute. Thank you.
Trusty Garrett.
Okay, I have a few things tonight. The annual decorating contest for Christmas, we're gonna shake it up a little bit this year. We are going to have three categories, not first, second, and third. We're gonna have the best overall presentation, which means how does your property look during the day as well as at night, a combo, two for one. The other category will be the best presentation during the day hours, and the last category will be the best presentation for evening hours. So obviously, the evening is how well lit your house is. So keep that in mind for those of you latecomers who have not decorated yet or are still finishing, like myself. And the judging will take place December 16th through the 22nd, throughout that whole week, day and night. So make sure your lights are on at night, because if we go by and it's not on, it won't be included, although I do go back several times. But anyway, our group is going to be looking for those three categories this year. All right? So that should be exciting, and we'll get that posted in the paper as soon as we have the three winners. Met last week with insurance companies. We're up again to negotiate some lower pricing. We met with Northern Insuring, which is NYMER Insurance, and Chauvin Agency, which is Trident. Both came back with their quotes. We gave some of the information we got back from Northern Insuring to Chauvin to take another look at, so that we get an apples-to-apples quote from both, because some categories, there were discrepancies as to what they cover as opposed to the other. So we want to kind of get it more in balance before it is presented. But we will be having to meet on that before the end of the year, so hopefully by the end of the week we'll have the answers. I'll give you a phone call, let you know when it's ready. In the process of taking a look at these insurance, I then got together all our fixed assets and started taking a look at what we have at all the facilities on our property, taking a look at the list. I did see some duplication of items. I saw some items that really weren't fixed assets, that were just replacement parts to equipment that could be removed from there. I found items that were long gone, and I also found items that have been stockpiled to put out to sell, that have been there for several years. So I will compose a list of all of that in detail, get the list of what's available for sale, and get it out there. No sense having it sit in the garage, you know? Do some housekeeping, it feels good. So anyway, I will get all that to you at the first part of the year for that. Let's see, that great. Oh, this thing's a sell. You're not perfect. So I want to work on with the guys, and we talked about it. I met with each of the staff to get a really up-to-date, detailed accuracy, get it where we have a detailed by building, because currently, some of the things are mixed, like if it's supposed to be at the wastewater plant, well, it's actually up here, or if it's supposed to be the water, it's actually wastewater, you know? So that we just get things categorized, so if someone were to walk in, any Tom, Dick, or Harry, and say, "Can I see your list?", and you can walk through and say, "Okay", you know, the photos of the town, you know, so we have a better picture. There are several items that aren't even on the list that need to get on the list for insuring purposes, and then big items that are on the list that need to come off the list. So it's a constant update, and I think if we become computerized, and it's easier to, you know, add and delete, it will be much nicer. So I'll work on that with the guys. Wells Communication got back to us, if you remember roughly three years ago, three, four years ago, could be five, six, we talked about walkie-talkies, GPSs, all that stuff, and we were waiting to see what the county was doing. They were coming out with a countywide change. That's here, but we have to make a decision immediately. Actually, needs to be brought under new business for tonight. So I don't know if you want me to discuss it now or wait for new business?
Discuss it. How long do we need to vote?
Okay. The information was put only into your box today, because they just got to us today on this availability. So through the counties, a big deal they're doing with the fire department, all the emergency folks, they will replace free of charge for us a radio for in the plow truck and one here in the office, free of charge. We can also then replace for $72.10. That's it. For Wells Communication walkie-talkie guys, okay, which is gonna reach the distance that we need to reach, which would also include a three-year contract for $72.10.
Each.
Each, yes. It's kind of a no-brainer here, not even a need for a discussion, but that's the information. Or we could also receive five free handheld walkie-talkies that are old, they're more obsolete. The value of those are $2,500 each, but they're not replaceable. They will only warranty it for a year, and if these break down on us, we're not gonna have the deal of the $72.10 to buy the new walkie-talkies.
I think we already have the number of those on ours here.
Yeah, we do. And they're all dead, and you can't get the batteries, and so... But I do have to present that to you so you're aware of all of the things. So it's a one-time chance, one-time deal. This is the time to act, and we'll need to bring that up under new business to vote upon that. Okay? I told you I'd get back to all the solar panels that I had seen, that they were... Company was coming in free of charge to put them up, and you pay back based on the energy that you're creating, that is for Vermont residents only, no businesses, and not for us over here. So I did find out about that. Special thank you to the NCCS students who came and decorated the village for our festivities this Saturday. Greatly appreciated.
Make sure he knows.
One student.
And Janet and Clark.
And Janet and Clark Herdick, thank you very much. It's very nice to have that happening. So a reminder again, as Greg said, the singing festivities will be downtown. It's really nice to get the community together. It's looking like it's gonna be pretty mild. The sun can be bitter cold like it was last year, so come on out. It should be fun. And also a reminder, the Playground Fund we are collecting, will continue to collect. That is not something that's going to go away, so as you're looking at the new year and who you're gonna be donating money to, keep us in mind, and feel free to make your checks out to the Champlain Playground Fund, and they can be mailed directly here to the village. Karen, what was our total?
No, they are their own PO box.
Oh, they're their own PO box. What's the PO box on that? She's getting it, fumbling. And?
Can't run it to the village.
Right. That's right, I'm sorry. My bad. And Karen, what was that total? We had a meeting before this.
Thirty-three seventy-five.
So far, we have $3,375 in the count, so if people are interested in knowing where we're at, which is really great.
And the PO box? Twenty-eight forty-two.
Okay. So mounted PO box, twenty-eight forty-two. We will accept all dollar amounts, especially the ones $5,000 and higher. We'll take that. And I want to wish everyone a very merry and blessed Christmas, and lots of health and prosperity for the new year. I know it's a tough time for everyone. It gets to be very, very stressful. Please take the time out to remember what the season is about and to share your blessings with your neighbors and keep our sense of community going. And Merry Christmas.
Thank you.
Could I ask a question?
Yes.
Yes, I understand you're raising money, and I don't get the paper. I read it online, and a lot of times, if you're not a headline, I don't see what's in the paper. How much do you think this park is gonna cost?
We're projecting $40,000 for the equipment that we've chosen. We are waiting for a response on a $20,000 grant, and we are also looking for further grants. Most of them start again January 1st, so I will be looking at those once again as the new year rolls around and applying for as many as we can. Once we get the money that's needed, we will be looking for in-kind services. Some of these grants are 50/50 through in-kind, so that's either through community members or through the guys, whomever is willing to do the work and donate parts or whatever the case scenario may be. So we're looking at roughly a $40,000 playground, both for children, it'll be an equipment for children, and for adults, an exercise section for the adults. So for those who aren't going to be in the garden weeding, which is very good exercise, can't beat that, we will have official exercise equipment for them. Plus, we are looking at a frisbee golf.
Disc golf.
Disc golf, of course. So it'll be kind of fun. Be nice.
So you obviously need considerably more money than $3,000 than you have now.
Yes. We're just... And that's just a start. Yep. Thank you for asking that.
Okay. Have the report from the clerk treasurer, please.
Everyone has their census revenue reports from November.
Seems like our budget is doing quite well. We're right on track for where we want to be at this time of the year.
Ahead of the game in a lot.
Yep.
Very ahead.
Got a couple requisitions to deal with. What is... We need to put some... We need to put some tires on the van out there. Not gonna make it through this winter, at least safely. It's not at the point where the Dodge pickup is that we're replacing. Put the Dodge van state contract of four tires, $627.28, four in tire.
Are these regular tires or snow tires?
All seasons. Mounted and balanced.
What kind of tire?
That is on the other side. But it's state contract. They have a motion, please?
For one at a time?
Yeah, let's do... Let's separate.
Make a motion to purchase the four tires for the Dodge van at a state contract rate of $627.28 for all four tires.
Have a second?
Second.
Any other discussion on this? Like to get this done as soon as possible. Have a roll call, please.
Trusty Trombley.
Aye.
Trusty Trombley.
Aye.
Trusty Garrett.
Aye.
Mayor Martin.
Aye. Next purchase requisition is for the cutoff saw. This is the saw that cuts through the blacktop when we need to make repairs. The one that we had is at Greg Oons, completely not... Not... It's done. This is almost an emergency purchase, because if we have a situation where we need to remove some blacktop in a hurry with a water main break or something of that nature, it's gonna put us extremely, I think, at risk here. A motion to approve? Have a second?
Second.
Any other discussion on this purchase? Pardon?
It was good to see we're buying local.
Yes. Yes.
Yeah, I see we're getting a little quote from the tailor. Greg Oons is our...
Yep.
So motion purchases for $11.59.
Roll call, please.
Trusty Trombley.
Aye.
Trusty Trombley.
Aye.
Trusty Garrett.
Aye.
Mayor Martin.
Aye. A motion to approve the warrant?
So moved.
Have a second?
Second.
Bring to your attention that the purchase price of the new vehicle to replace that hazardous, broken-down liability Dodge pickup back there until I don't like it. Will be coming out of the wastewater fund? Let me see, there's retirement and workers' compensation, and this is valid. Pay that at the end of the year.
We'll have to transfer funds next time. So before retirement.
We have a motion and a second? Any other discussion? Roll call, please.
Trusty Trombley.
Aye.
Trusty Trombley.
Aye.
Trusty Garrett.
Trusty Garrett?
Trusty Garrett.
Aye.
Mayor Martin.
Aye. You've been copied with the DPW work log, November 1st through November 30th. Is there any questions on this work log? There's a couple places we'll have to go back in the spring to finish up. Lads, we have the water main break. We've done some raking and some leveling, but we'll go back to top two of our season Any questions that I can help with?
No, that was straightforward.
Okay. Clerk, read your first lines, please.
Mayor Martin? I'm not sure Mr. Nephew was here from Mandeville.
Oh, that's right. I'm sorry. Yes?
We have another question.
How are you?
Good, you?
Yep.
Good.
This is Mr. Nephew from Mandeville.
Let's do the vote, the motion's on the table.
Oh, that's right. I'm sorry.
For the warrant.
Yep. We need a roll call vote for the warrant.
Trusty Trombley.
Aye.
Trusty Trombley.
Aye.
Trusty Garrett.
Aye.
Mayor Martin.
Aye. Thanks again.
Sorry.
Thank you. Hey, this is Mr. Nephew, who is a representative of Ambit Energy, to give us some, I guess, a little more information, a little bit of insight on what the program is all about, thinking about potential savings here, how this will help us with our electric bill.
Yeah. And I'm Dan Nephew, live in the local area for all my life, and I got connected with Ambit Energy here back a couple years ago. And a little bit about Ambit Energy, as everyone knows, over the years ago, back in the 1990s, everybody with the deregulation of energy coming on, everybody had a right to choose their energy supplier. And of course, everybody get this notice in the mail, and nobody knew what to do with it, because they didn't know which direction to go. And a lot of people turned the wrong way and so forth, and there is about somewhere in the vicinity of 25 to 30 energy companies out there right now. Agway and Columbia, and there's quite a bunch of them. And some of them aren't quite as good as other ones in Southland, but I got hooked up with Ambit, and they are an honest... My son's an attorney, and we had him... Ambit Energy is based out of Texas, and we had him do the homework on them before I got involved with them, because my reputation is out there when I... Well, I started going around talking to people in Southland. They are a very legitimate energy company. And getting back to it, Ambit Energy, they started back in 1996, and they're not anything overseas, they're local in the United States. And they've been doing it for, what, six and a half, I'm going on seven years now. And they're... Started up in 199... 2006, I'm sorry. And they're... Yeah, they're privately owned company, debt-free, there's no debt load on them whatsoever. And they originated in Texas, and then they're moving across the country, and they're gonna cover all 50 states before they're done. And they started in Texas and then moved to New York, and then they moved to Illinois, and then they did Pennsylvania, and New Jersey, and Connecticut, and Massachusetts, and Maryland. and then they did Pennsylvania and New Jersey and Connecticut and Massachusetts and Maryland. And those, those are states that they're in right now and they're really, really strong. In fact, they just, we just got a notice over the internet today that they, they just hit their millionth active customer in six, in six years. And they're, 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 in Ink Magazine, and I don't know if everybody ever heard of the Ink Magazine, five hundred magazine, Ambit Energy, two years ago, became the number one fastest growing privately owned company in the United States in, in, and they did it in just three states. And so they're, they're rapidly growing and, and we've, we've got a, and Ambit, Ambit Energy doesn't, uh, they don't advertise in any way. Their advertising is myself and all our other consultants. And they, it's all word of mouth and that's why we, we did our homework before we stuck our nose in it and they put my reputation on it and so forth. And we've, we've got numerous, I mean, some, some of the listed customers, they got me to Riley Ford, signed up, Dupree Feeds, Champlain, Peterville, the paint shop right next to Champlain. And Dragoons are, they're, I talked to Gary the other day and he's, he's going to come on. And we got people like down in Plasberg, we got, uh, the Carpet Place there on Route Three.
Lea appliance?
Yeah, Lea appliance. He's on and Marty Brothers and we got, we got quite a number of them on and they're all reputable. And this, this company, the, the people, people sometimes ask, well, what's, what's your rates? And there's no, you don't need to know the rates because this company guarantees the savings. It's in writing. At the end, at the end of a twelve-month period, if, they'll guarantee a minimum of one percent. And at the end of the year, if you didn't save that minimum one percent, they'll send, send you a check to make the difference up. But everybody's coming in, we usually like to keep the figure up around six to nine percent that everybody's coming in at. And it all depends what energy company you're coming out of as to what you're saving because some of them are, some of them are robbing the people blind and so forth, the companies that are involved now and stuff. But, but this, this company has a guaranteed savings of a minimum of one percent. But like you say, it's coming in and along with gas and electric. It's good for gas and electricity. And, uh, yeah, they're, they're very reputable and, I mean, you, there's no, like you said, there's no, you'll never get a call from Ambit Energy unless you call them with a problem or something. They don't, they don't solicit any customers or anything, everything is done through the consultants and so forth. And, uh, but it's, you know, we've got a, got a lot of prominent businesses that are switching over. They've got a lot, a lot of farms that are starting to switch over too. But everybody, it's been out long enough now, been in New York for a little over two years now and all of New York State is completely covered. See, they, they take a certain area and then they get going in it and then they'll open up some more counties and so forth. And that's how they do their states and they, so I mean, they, they're going to cover all fifty states and it's going to go in overseas and everything before they're done. So I mean, it's a, it's a pretty, pretty big, and there's a lot, a lot of people, in fact, like my, uh, my in-laws, they were with a company called Columbia. And they had switched a few years ago and like everybody else, they got the notice and they didn't know where to go with it. And so they picked this one right out of the blue, Columbia. And when we, when we get hooked up with Ambit, we went and saw them and they said, yeah, we just want to try it. And we, we compared and they were paying almost two times as much to Columbia as they did when we switched them over to Ambit Energy. And in the, for the first two years that he was with Ambit Energy, they paid, and they're elderly, they fixed income and they almost paid for their fuel for the limited savings that they, that they made. But not everybody's going to save that much, but it all depends what energy company you come out of and so forth. But, but it's, uh, you know, it's, there's, it's a growing market and I mean, there's, people, people don't realize the money that was made in the, in electric business until you start seeing some of the savings that are out there now. I mean, it is huge. And so, I mean, this is a company that's, you know, I, I wouldn't recommend them if, if they weren't legit and so forth. And I, you know, I've been with them about two years now and, and another, another thing that they do is say, like, I, I signed up and I signed fifteen friends and relatives, neighbors underneath me and then I get my service side of my energy bill free. Like last, all, all summer long, I was getting anywhere from a hundred to a hundred and fifty dollars off my electric bill. And anybody that comes, anybody that becomes a customer can do the same thing. And that, that's why this company works so well because they're, they're, you, you've got to get customers in order to get, get them money and then they pay you in turn to, for getting them customers. So I mean, it really, really works well.
Does it feel that we couldn't do that?
No, no, right, right. But I'm just saying, you know, for, but anybody is individuals. I mean, any individual in here that wanted to sign up their home and then get fifteen friends, relatives, neighbors to sign up under their home can do the same thing and get this, get this free, free energy. So it's a, you know, and then they have, they have perks, like, you know, appreciation for signing up with them. Like they do it with, um, they can do it with credit card point system. They have points for just paying your electric bill. At the end, like right now, right now, we've got enough points built up where I can get a free, two free airline tickets anywhere in the United States just for paying my electric bill. They give me enough points over the two years. So it's just perks, perks like that, that, you know, tell people that they appreciate your business and so forth.
So the, the minimal savings is one percent?
Minimal is one percent and that's guaranteed.
Potential is for more.
Right, right. It all depends where you're coming from.
Did I hear you correctly that we don't have to be concerned with a fixed rate or a variable rate?
No, because, because everybody, you know, the rates, rates change all the time anyways. I mean, everybody's on a variable rate. And, and they, they guarantee at the end of a twelve, what they do at the end of a twelve-month period is they'll take your, compare what you would have paid with, whether it be NISAG or any other company that you were with and they'll run a chart and if you didn't save a minimal, minimal of one percent, they'll send you a check. But, you know, and we, an average, a lot like down at Lee, Lee Appliances down there, they're, they're, they're saving like in, in range of fifteen percent because they come out of, I believe they were NISAG Solutions that they come, which is switched from. And so they were saving like fifteen percent and then, uh, Pro, Pro Pharmacy down there, there were some huge savings down there. But like you say, not everybody's going to have as much, the savings, you know, they're going to vary.
So what happens after the first year?
It continues, they, they guarantee, they guarantee, they guarantee the savings. You'll, and at the end, at the end of each year, you'll get a notice in the mail that you stay on guaranteed savings. That's the, the only thing you choose, what I have to do is check a box stating that you want to stay on guaranteed savings. And that's the only, the only thing that you'll get from Ambit.
And is there any cost, I'm sorry, to change?
No cost to switch if you're not satisfied.
All current equipment?
Yep.
Nothing different?
And no matter, whatever, whatever you're set, whatever, some, see, like some people are on, um, um, what am I trying to say here? The budget, budget plan. If you're on budget plan or you're on night rate, however you're fixed up now, it'll, it'll all, and you get one bill and it comes from NISAG. If you have a problem, you call NISAG. You, nothing changes other than you'll see little savings at the end of the month.
So the, NISAG still does the billing for both delivery charge and the energy?
NISAG and, NISAG and, uh, and Ambit divvy up at the end of the month. You, you're not involved with that at all. You pay, you pay NISAG and, and nothing, nothing change. And that's what a lot of people like about it. Not, I mean, nothing changes. You get your bill from your same, your, your same energy company, NISAG or whoever you're with. Whether it be National Grid or NISAG or whatever area you're in and so forth. But it's, and, you know, and a lot, and a lot of people say, well, you know, what have you got to lose? You know, we'll try it and, and that's, that's what NISAG about it. If, if you're not satisfied, you switch back at no cost and you, you've lost nothing, you know, so it's...
So there's no fee at all for switching?
No, no fee for switching.
From NISAG Solutions to Ambit?
As long as your, as long as your contract is up, your yearly, see, like you, when, when do you, you'd have to check with, you, you are coming from NISAG Solutions? So you'd have to check with NISAG Solutions to make sure it's your time to, you know...
From what I was told the other day, talking with another, another energy person, they said that if we, our, all of our accounts are on variable rates, so there is no charge. You can change anytime you want.
Oh, there is? Okay.
If you're on a fixed rate apparently and you have a contract, then it won't be charged.
Okay, yeah.
According to them, there's no charge.
Yeah, so, you know, that'd be the only thing that you usually want to do is just double check and make sure there is no charge. But there's no charge on Ambit's part of it to switch. And if you're not satisfied for any reason, you switch back, get, no, no cost to switch, no questions asked and... Other than that, I don't know if anybody's, anyone has any questions or anything that, that I could answer.
The board have any questions?
No, my main question was Billy and how it was handled.
Yeah.
He answered it up. I am aware of the company.
Now, just as a, as a statement of clarity, we invited another firm to come in as well and they decided not to come in and do a presentation.
Oh, really?
Yes. Does the public have any questions for Mr.?
No, I think he said there, there would be no cost because if we were on NISAG Solutions, because I think residential is more or less a fixed rate instead of a variable rate.
But it, it, and it, and it doesn't matter whether you're fixed, variable, whatever.
It could be chosen either. It could be either of them.
Yeah, it's, yeah, it's...
What I'm saying is, you know, if, if in six months, it didn't seem like it was working out.
Well, see, this is, this is where you...
There's a timeline, okay?
Right, this is where you've got to be careful too and, and we have lost a few customers because of this. Is if, you've got to let it go to year. Because I mean, it, it might vary a little bit from one month to the next and you've got to let it go that year, the twelve months in order to get your minimum one percent savings.
That's what I was looking at.
Yeah.
So in other words, you're saying, actually, if you get into it, you should stay in it at least that one year.
Right, you've got to, you've got to give it a chance to, right.
That's right. So what was that? You see, you're still getting billed from NISAG.
Yeah.
They'll be, they'll be billing you.
Right.
But you people will also be figuring out how much to send to them for them to send to us for a bill. So we'd have to pay NISAG for doing the billing, plus we'd have to pay your firm for doing the paperwork and the figuring out.
But, but it's all, it's all done, all done through, it's all done through NISAG?
Your firm bills NISAG. NISAG puts in our bill and we get the bill. But we're in, in reality, we're paying two firms here instead of one.
But that's what it is now. When they changed it a few years ago, NISAG was just the carrier to...
Everybody, right.
Just the delivery charge.
Right.
Well, this is what NISAG told me. I was in Columbia, not good.
Yeah. That's where my in-laws were.
And you can't get out for a year.
Right.
And if you tried to, you're going to pay some big price to get out.
Right.
So you can't switch back for at least a year. And then when we did switch back, we had a talk with NISAG and they said, yes, all these firms, there is quite a few out there. What they do is, they do the bill filling. And all NISAG does is send you the bill. But you're paying for them to do the paperwork because they're sending theirs, they put it right on your, when they figure out how much you owe. They also add in two percent, three percent, whatever they get, and send it to New York Gas Electric and then they bill you that one bill.
It makes no difference if they're billing whatever their, their, uh...
That's what I do.
Things are, but you're, you're still guaranteed that savings, you're still guaranteed that savings no matter what they're doing with NISAG and Ambit or Columbia or wherever. You're, you're still guaranteed that savings.
Could be different.
Yeah.
Well, NISAG, you're still...
NISAG is just your delivery.
Yeah, you get delivery.
Yeah, NISAG's just a delivery. Because they own the, your unit is billing.
Yeah, they own every...
Because they own the line. So you're, you're still paying in.
These are like the same things that, they're called the ESCO.
Yes, yes, ESCO is coming, yeah, right, right. There's about twenty-five to thirty different ESCOs out there.
I didn't even ever know about this one.
Oh, really?
I had some people come from Syracuse area, um, a year ago and they came back again this year.
Oh, really?
Because I didn't go through with it.
Oh.
Because the NISAG people told me, well, they sent me a message, an email or whatever, that I had been approved, that they were going to transfer the electric part, but, but the other company hadn't been approved yet for the gas part.
Oh, uh-huh, yeah.
And I didn't really want to mess with that because I saved a lot of money when I went to gas.
Yeah, that's right. And see, what, what's happening with them too is NISAG, see, with these, with these energy companies, they can't, they can't make a profit off of their supply side. They're, they're, when they chose, when, in the deregulation, they have to do the delivery. Everybody has to do delivery and they can't make a profit off in the supply side. So they've got to dump the customers and a lot of times what they're doing is if they've got, the quota, they've got to dump some people and you haven't switched yet, they can take you and put you wherever they want and you're theirs. Or if you choose, at least you, and your own, you have a right to choose wherever you want to go.
Dan, would you mind saying?
Oh, no, 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 yeah.
I mean, till after the meeting?
Oh, sure.
I'm sure they have more questions for you so that we can give back.
Yeah, definitely. No, not a problem.
Thank you. I appreciate it. Thank you for your report. Have the correspondence, please.
Letter to Beverly Kennedy regarding denial of one-time sewer credit. Letters to bidders for two thousand thirteen dump truck regarding bid award. FOIL request from John Kevin Triller dated eleven eighteen twelve in response to his, to him regarding the timeframe for the village response. Correspondence from New York State DC regarding landowner incentive program, grassland focus. FOIL request from John Kevin Triller dated eleven twenty twelve in response to him regarding the timeframe for the village response. Letter to John Kevin Triller regarding assignment of property at forty-six Elm Street. Correspondence from Friends of the North Country regarding update of the two thousand and seven multi-jurisdictional pre-disaster hazardous mitigation program. Letter to John Kevin Triller regarding no trespassing of village property. FOIL request from John Kevin Triller dated twelve two twelve in response to his, to him regarding the timeframe for the village response. Notice of violation to Michael Oliver Trust for the property located at thirty-six Moore Street. Memo from Codes Officer Tatro to Candela Friends regarding the burned property at twenty ninety Cedar Street. Correspondence from Dale Counter regarding his water sewer bill on his property located at forty-two Willow Street. Resignation letter from Larry Sorrell. Correspondence from New England Waste Services regarding increase in landfill fees. Correspondence from Tom Warner Cable regarding retroactive fees.
Any discussion on the, on the correspondence? All right, our old business, nothing has changed. I think we need to remove the old business with the GSE meter.
Something I'd, I'd like to mention about that is, can we put out, try to return or sell that meter that we purchased? For that, that is a large amount of money.
I'd have to look at, look at the, the way that it was set up. I think we bought one.
We did.
To replace what it was, we purchased at the time, I believe we purchased the wrong...
I remember some, I remember that as well. But we never did go out and get the larger meter.
But we have a meter for that amount sitting back there. Can we try to sell that or...
We can look at it.
Whether it be the wrong one or not, there's a meter sitting there that's a lot of money.
Yeah. We can look and see if we can get that back.
Yes, we should take that off because nothing's happening.
You've been copied with, under new business, the resolution to abolish voter registration day. What does, how does the board feel about that?
Can I have more information?
About what it is, it's this resolution two. We used to have a voter registration day a couple of weeks, a few weeks or so before.
Right.
To register voters. Over the last few elections, I don't think anyone committed a register, did they?
Very, very rarely. Most, most villages in the state don't, don't have a registration anymore apparently. According to what we learned at my college.
Reason for it?
They can come in at any time and register to vote, correct?
They would have to go to the Board of Elections.
Do you have paperwork here to hand them to do that?
Not normally, no.
Is that something we could have on hand for someone who were interested? Might be something?
Yeah, I'm sure just some sort of form from the county.
I'm sure we could pick someone for elections or something.
Yeah, and it might be a good idea when we go around for reelections or trustees to have some on hand for people to register. Just if you're not registered, help people register, kind of eliminate.
Sounds good.
Make a motion to abolish the voter registration day?
Have a second?
Second.
I have a second. Any other discussion on this? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Any motion to accept the resignation of Larry Sorrell as superintendent of private...
So moved.
Works. Have a second?
Second.
All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Effective... Effective.
December third.
The ninth?
No.
December third.
December third.
Third.
Okay, effective December third. Like a motion to advertise... December third, okay. Effective December third. Like a motion to advertise advertise for the position of superintendent of Public Works. So we can start the interview process here. Have a second?
Second.
Any discussion on this motion?
Is there a timeframe?
That's what I would like to know from you. What would you like?
Now?
No, for how long do we?
Oh, advertise for.
Advertise for.
We advertise for three days and then if we advertise tomorrow?
Yeah, I put in for three days.
Well, it's gonna take.
We'll get it, we'll take a couple of weeks to get in there.
Okay.
Tomorrow, yeah. Well, we should be in Prowl by the weekend.
And we have a template to use for this. Okay, advance to advertise for.
And all the other sources of advertising, both, you know, the.
Monster.
Yeah, those kinds of things plus the, oh my gosh, too much thinking today. You know, unemployment services and the temp services, you know, notify them of the opening as well.
We can. We don't normally do that, but.
I say let's put it to all the avenues right now with the amount of people that are out of work. As many avenues that we can hit for this position, it's a good position. Say we hit them, especially the ones that aren't going to cost us money.
How much time do you want to give for response? Two weeks, three weeks?
I'm always thinking too, but I'm trying to remember what we did last time.
It was three weeks. Two weeks, then we narrowed it down, that narrowed it down to three, an interview of three.
I'd like to be interviewing right after the holidays.
Yeah.
By the first of the year.
Two weeks.
Be interviewing.
As soon as possible.
The tenth, seventeenth, twenty-four.
After the holidays?
Yes.
So it's three weeks. We get it, three weeks.
That is three weeks.
Yeah, well, about three weeks.
I'd like to be interviewing right after the year and have someone who positions you right about.
Yes, I'd like somebody to take that picture. Okay. We have a motion, we have a second. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. I need to send, I'm sorry, motion carries. I need a motion to accept the bid or a bid for the millings. I have to do some explaining here. The bids came in. I felt it was important, I felt it was important that the millings be removed as soon as possible because of the weather conditions and that the person who had the greatest bid needed to move them into a parking lot and spread it as soon as possible. So, right or wrong, maybe a mistake made here, but I took it upon myself to tell the winning bidder to go ahead and do this. The bids, we got two bids for it. One was Beeman's for sixteen hundred, two dollars and fifty-two cents. The other was for Billy Laduke or Ladue, seven hundred and seventy-six dollars. I felt that Beeman's was a was by far and away a bid to go with, so I allowed them to remove and clean up the pile on Elm Street. So I guess in hindsight, I guess I need a bid or I need a motion to approve this and then we can move on. And I'll take the heat for this one. Have a second?
Second.
All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. You've been copied with the letter sent from Codes Enforcement Officer Tatro regarding property on twenty-nine Cedar Street. The property needs some, the property needs some attention. It's uninhabitable at this time. Mr. Tatro sent the letter dated November twenty-eighth, two thousand and twelve and with his with his recommendation. Third paragraph, at this time, I believe the structure should be demolished. No attempt has been made to repair or rebuild the damaged portions of the home. As is creates blight to neighborhood as well as danger to the home bordering the lot, which is less than four feet away. Proximity of the front of the structure to the sidewalk also makes this a severe hazard to pedestrians on the sidewalk. Our job is to, our job for the board resolution or board motion to to set a time limit for this to this repair or demolition to occur. So that Mike can follow up on this as well. You've been copied with that with the village code pertaining to that. We are looking at number five, must set time limit. And it's up to the board to decide, one, two, or three, which of the three are going to be the date which will be used. It should be not less than fifteen days from the date of one of the following. The date of personal service of such notice. Second, the date of mailing of such notice. Or third, the last date of publication of such notice.
Has it been a response?
No.
To the letter?
No, no response that we have received.
Well, I guess the date of the mailing of such notice would probably be the easiest in assuming. So we'll do that. Timestamp.
Okay. Do you want to make that in the form of a motion?
Yes, make motion that and what would the timeframe be, by the way?
The timeframe when it's mailed, it's fifteen days to come.
Not less than fifteen days.
Not less than fifteen.
Okay, from the date of mailing. So the motion is to use the date of mailing of this notice as a timestamp to start that.
Yep, we have a second. I'm sure that Mike will be available if there's any questions. If Mr. Bell French has any questions or any type of issue like this, we need to have a motion. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Intervene a motion to go back to what Amy was referring to with Wells Communication and the purchase of radios. We've been looking at this for a number of years as she mentioned. We were waiting kind of on the sheriff to come up with the sheriff to come up with a plan from a grant that was received from the federal government to deal with radios. And we also were looking at the fence at the water plant, which will be brought up next month's meeting to repair that, get that taken care of. We're in violation of the Health Department now. I'd like to get that taken care of. But that will be next month. You want to go back over the highlights of this evening, please?
Yeah, the highlights are we will receive one free radio for both the plow truck and the village office and we can purchase five additional units at the price of seventy, twenty, seventy-two-ten, seventy-two dollars and ten cents each. That would include a three-year contract. Or we can opt for the five free handheld walkie-talkie units, older, obsolete, one-year warranty. And then it's done and gone. Ab that.
Need a motion?
The seventy-two-ten, I'm sorry, I make a motion.
It's a cost of three hundred and sixty dollars and fifty cents for them to come and replace our radio system and supply us with radios. Total cost? To us. The cost for them to do it is twelve thousand, six hundred and eighty-seven dollars.
I know. I stopped myself because I know I needed to make a motion first before we started discussion. So I make a motion.
Okay. To?
To go ahead with the replacement of the two radios, one for the plow truck, one for the office and the purchase of five new radios at a cost of seventy-two-ten each and a contract of three years.
Okay, and the total cost would be again.
Three hundred and sixty dollars and fifty cents.
Have a second?
One second.
Any further discussion on this?
Oh, yes, that's what I was going to ask. I'm sorry. The seventy-two-ten for each radio, that is the same price each year. The contract doesn't go up.
No, that's.
That's it.
We will, oh, yeah, that's.
Total for the three years.
Yeah.
Okay. That was all I wanted to know.
We don't pay that each year.
No, that's just.
Right, it's a time cost with a three-year warranty.
Mm-hmm.
And the equipment.
Right. That's what I wanted to know.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Any further discussion? Hold on, please.
What account would that come out of, Juanita? Sorry. Thank you. Trustee Chombley?
Aye.
Trustee Chombley?
Aye.
Trustee Garrett?
Aye.
Mayor Martin?
Aye. Any other new business coming before the board?
I don't think so.
No. Thank you all. Intervene a motion to adjourn.
So.
Have a second?
Second.
All in favor?